Hello. So, let's begin. Let's begin by roll call.
Mr. Miko. Absent. Mr. Delvecchio.
Here.
Mr. Disamoni.
Here.
Mr. Jaramillo. Absent. Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
And Mrs. Simmons-Hurling.
Here.
Here. Okay. First order of business for the Planning Board is a public hearing regarding rooming houses and lodging houses. This was submitted by the City Council to presently allow... Lodging houses and rooming houses are presently allowed in a number of districts. The City Council wants to limit it to the Highway Business District and only by special permit. So, the ordinance simply makes an amendment to include rooming houses and lodging houses by special permit only in the Highway Business District and has a upgraded definition for rooming and lodging houses. So...
Are there any proponents here to speak on this today? Any opponents?
Okay, hearing is seen and done. You can close that part of the hearing. Hearing number two is a proposed opening ordinance amendment to the Overlook Ridge overlay district with respect to parking and respect to casual dining services.
Are there any proponents here to speak on this today?
Hi there. My name is Jennifer Schultz and I represent the proponent for this amendment I'm permitting in Land Use Council on behalf of Varis Residential, who is the owner of the two remaining lots in Overlook Ridge.
Put your last name again.
Oh, I'm sorry. Schultz, S-C-H-U-L-T-Z. And if you need an address, one post office square in Boston. So, as just noted, we're here in order to effectuate the final two lots of redevelopment in the Overlook Ridge Rose Quarry site. And for the two remaining lots, known as Lot 1 and Lot 15, Lot 15 has always been envisioned as a multifamily residential property and not requesting any dimensional changes or any use changes for that site. Instead, for that piece of the remaining development, the request is to reduce the parking ratio required from two parking spaces per unit to 1.75 parking spaces per unit. And that would bring the parking ratio in line with all of the other redevelopment of the Overlook Ridge site that has already been built out. I believe that most of those prior developments, instead of a zoning amendment process up front, received variances at the back end. But for this, because we are seeking a zoning amendment sort of for greater effectuation of the redevelopment, are seeking that relief right now to reduce the parking ratio so that it conforms with the rest of the development that is already on the site and up and running today. For Lot 1, that site which has the firehouse on it with sort of a wraparound L-shaped lot left for redevelopment, I know over the years, at one point had been conceptualized as a hotel with retail as sort of a dual component. And due to mostly market conditions, the site is now envisioned as retail, food and beverage, everything sort of whatever best serves the residents of Overlook Ridge. And so, we have a few requests for the zoning amendment that would help us effectuate that. One is to create a new use category of restaurant. Right now, the only restaurant that would be allowed would be sit-down table service. And so, our request is to include a new category of casual dining, not fast food, but you know, something sort of akin to a Chipotle where you go to the counter and you... It is made to order in your specification and then you sit down, but you know, no whitecloths, no table service. And then also to allow for the retail to be standalone as opposed to a requirement that you can only have retail with a hotel, which is presently the requirement. With the retail that's conceptualized right now, it isn't, you know, no leases are signed, but the hope would be that there could be a space for a coffee shop, something along those lines to serve people at the breakfast hour on that side of the community. You know, certainly will be going out to market to see if a local green grocer has interest in the site, since that might be something that, or like a drugstore, you know, just really thinking through what would best serve the residents of Overlook Ridge, possibly also, or in the alternative, a casual dining like a Chipotle like I mentioned. And then, the final detailed request is that any standalone retail, instead of being maximized at 5,000 square feet, would be maximized at 6,000 square feet, simply, you know, based on kind of market data of what those various types of retailers might be looking for. We're hearing that they might like a little bit more space and that the lot itself would allow for a single-story buildout of 6,000 square feet on one piece of that L. And that's it.
Good evening. Tom Skarsky, Chief of Planning Community Development for the City of Revere. I'm here tonight to speak in support, conditionally, on this zoning amendment in front of us tonight. Just for a little bit of context, I'm part of the Joint Planning Task Force, which included Mr. Rupp here beside me, as well as elected officials, our Ward Counselor Ricky Serino, as well as a Revere resident representative, Celeste Souza, who's here with us tonight, along with folks from Malden, both elected officials, resident representatives, and municipal officials, who all came together in May to formally endorse this amendment to the master plan, which is kind of the underpinning for the zoning changes that are following and are in front of you tonight. I submitted a letter to the Malden City Council and Planning Board, similarly showing support, but a conditional support for their zoning changes on their end, conditional on two main things, one of those being the restarting of the shuttle service that was, you know, a pre-existing commitment for Overlook Ridge that had lapsed in recent months and I understand is now back in operation, which is great, and we want to make sure that continues to be an amenity for residents in the neighborhood. And secondly, conditional on the off-site improvements being completed in advance of construction starting on the next phase of the project. And just for context, I know it wasn't discussed earlier, but the off-site improvements include some major changes to the on and off ramps to Route 1, which is long overdue if you've ever driven off of or on to that ramp. It's a safety hazard both for Overlook residents, Revere residents, and just folks throughout the region. And secondly, on intersection improvements to be made at Overlook Drive and Salem Street, which again are kind of a critical safety component. They improve sightlines, they improve the geometry at that intersection, and just make it a safer place for residents, both, you know, bicyclists, walkers, as well as drivers. So, I submitted that conditional letter of support to the Malden City Council and Planning Board last month. Their meeting, I believe, is continued until later in August. Still do remain supportive for a variety of reasons. You know, number one, there's going to be 50 affordable units of the 310 that are proposed, and that was done through negotiation with the city and the developer. We're trying to use, you know, each and every larger development opportunity we have as an opportunity to confront the housing crisis we have in front of us. So, as part of the housing development, 50 of those units will be de-restricted affordable, which is great. And, you know, it's certainly... The residential component is aligned with the original master plan. It's actually a net decrease in density from what was approved. So, again, we're building, but not building as much as they could to the sort of ceiling threshold that have been developed in the original master plan. The commercial, although it is not a hotel as originally promised, it actually provides, we think, amenities that are more responsive to the needs of the neighborhood. And, you know, the need for a hotel is a little bit different today than what it was when Overlook was first planned out. We've had a large influx of hotel development, both planned and built in recent years, and the site that was originally proposed for a hotel development, the market just wasn't appropriate for it, which is why I think it moved over to another side of the development. So, we think that commercial development's in line with the needs of the neighborhood and more appropriate for the market. And in addition to that, I think the off-site improvements that I mentioned before, you know, we're talking tens of millions of dollars' worth of improvements that are critical for safety for residents in the neighborhood, the city, and the region. And I think the parking relief that's requested is reasonable and in line with what the development is seeing in other parts of Overlook. That being said, I think after last night's hearing of the City Council, there were some additional concerns that were raised that I feel are legitimate and should be considered as the board is making their vote tonight. There were discussions about visitor parking in some of the original Overlook Ridge development sites that, you know, perhaps some of the visitor parking had gone away to make room for additional parking for residents of Overlook and more as a broader complaint. It was brought up that there are multiple different property owners within Overlook and sometimes the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing. And how do we ensure that any commitments made tonight are carried out for not just these last two developments, but for the entire master plan development, because ultimately that's what we're talking about. Here's a master plan. And any of these off-site improvements, any of these improvements for the residents should happen for the residents of the entire development. That was always the intent. And I would like to hear from the developers as to how they're going to make sure that that is a commitment across the board for Overlook Ridge as a master plan community. And then finally, a related point, how to ensure continued dialogue with the neighborhood as the development works its way through this zoning amendment process onto if it's passed by the Planning Board and the City Council, onto the site plan review process, and how to ensure an ongoing dialogue with the neighborhood so they're not caught off guard by this project. And we're not just meeting the bare minimum public notice requirements for projects of this scale, but we're actually engaging the community to make sure they're a part of this effort. So, we are in a bit of a strange situation here because we're not actually talking about the projects. We're talking about the zoning amendment that is the precondition for those projects to happen. But because this project won't come in front of the Planning Board, again, this is really an opportunity for the board to make clear those commitments that we feel should be a critical part of that process as we move into the site plan review process. So, I would encourage you to make clear what those asks might be of the developer and make sure that we get them on record to state that these are commitments they're making for the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other proponents?
Hi. My name's Paul Rupp and I've been consultant to this project on behalf of Lynn and Malden with the developer since the very beginning and when we negotiated a land reclamation agreement and a master plan process and all of these things that govern the project to date. And it's worked very well. I mean, I think that they have lived up to all of their obligations. I'm a little concerned now in that we have multiplicity of owners of properties there. And what I'm going to ask is that both cities reached out to the developers and property owners and tried to arrange some kind of a system of communication and control over issues like visitor parking and who's going to do what if roads become public in the future. So, anyway, I think that the use issue is a non-issue. I personally have taken many developers to look at the site and it's not sufficient for a hotel of the type that have developed in Revere. Some amenity of a coffee shop, restaurant, casual restaurant makes sense for the site, not only for that site, but for nearby sites. There's a condo development going up the old Ann Mark Nursing Home was. So, and there's Williamsburg Square there as well. So, anyway, those are issues. I think that the cities should be vigilant in terms of the MEPA process. And when amendments come before or presented to the MEPA certificate by the developer or developers, that the city should weigh in on the importance of the shuttle bus service to downtown. So, anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Hearing done, seen, done. Close this part of the hearing.
Are there any opponents that would like to speak?
Hi. Thank you. My name is Celeste Souza. I live at 19 Overlook Ridge Terrace, Unit 124. Thank you for being here tonight. I am a current resident of Overlook Ridge on the Revere side. And I agree to, you know, everything that Tom was saying with the conditional support. I was part of the Joint Planning Task Force, so I've been involved in a lot of these discussions. And I know it's a very complex situation with two towns being involved, three property owners and managers. And unfortunately, the residents of Revere live in a community that is managed and owned not by the people, you know, proposing the project, by Varis and Wynn. So, unfortunately, you know, we are excluded from all, well, any communications that have happened, especially regarding the shuttle bus, which is what I brought to the attention of the Joint Task Force back in May, that this was a service taken away from us residents that was a guarantee in our lease and has big impacts on the community. I've seen impacts in traffic in our complex, especially during school time. I'm sure has impact to families that might only have one car or no car that relied on that transportation into Boston to work. And I know that they say the shuttle bus has been brought in back, but for us residents who live in Revere and aren't not managed and owned by these, by Varis and Wynn, we have not been communicated to. And that is part of my, you know, conditional support is that can the cities of Revere and Malden hold, somehow hold, the complex as a whole responsible for clear and honest communication with all residents? Because unfortunately, you know, the Revere residents are sandwiched between these property owners that want to do these, you know, projects on Lot 1 and Lot 15. So, you know, we're directly impacted as being in the middle. In regards to the parking reduction, I will state that parking, visitor parking has been taken away on the Revere side due to, you know, more people moving into the complex and they turn those guest parking spots into residential spots that we have to pay for, $50 a month per spot. So, I do see concerns with the 2 to 1.75 reduction, assuming that, you know, there is a housing crisis and those units will get filled, that there could be parking issues in this new lot on Revere side as well, considering that currently it's a 1.75 ratio for parking spots to each unit. Yeah, and then I touch on the bus shuttle as an amenity that I think needs to be communicated to all Revere residents. And hopefully the towns can hold the managers and developers of that, the owners of the Revere side accountable to that. In regards to the casual restaurant, as opposed to, I know there was a lot of discussion last night about hotel versus casual restaurant. Speaking from a resident perspective, I'm in favor of the two commercial spaces being retail over a hotel. I feel a lot safer that way. I don't think that bringing a hotel into that spot right next to that building would be beneficial. There'd be severe parking issues. I don't even know how you'd have a parking lot to fit a hotel of potentially X amount of stories. And I just think that'd bring safety concerns and unwanted guests into the community. If you ever bend Overlook Ridge, it's a quarry. There's rocks on most sides of it. It's a very secluded area. Currently, only people that live there go there. Nobody else needs to drive through it or go through it. I mean, we're going to be opening it up to Route 1, which will create more traffic as it is, and then a hotel would bring additional, you know, noise and people and traffic. I think a coffee shop and a restaurant, something like that would much better serve the residents of Overlook Ridge, as I assume most people that will be using that will be the residents of Overlook Ridge and maybe the surrounding streets. But I don't imagine much traffic from elsewhere probably utilizing those two areas. I would also support, you know, if we could prefer locally-owned businesses over, you know, large corporations, especially considering this is a smaller community and smaller space. I think supporting, you know, local-owned Massachusetts, Revere-owned businesses would be best. And I know that in the proposal, there was talks about a potential for a drive-through with approval, like future approval. I do have concerns about drive-through in terms of space and how that would work, but I don't know if that's the exact scope of tonight's discussion, but I know, I saw that in the plans for the City Council yesterday. I think that's it. Thank you.
Before we leave, I just, one question for the board. The $50 fee for parking per month, is that included in your rent or is that an additional fee?
It's an additional fee because you don't technically have to have a parking space if you don't have a car.
Yeah. Okay. I just want to confirm that because the owner of the developer is responsible to provide the parking. It's a requirement of our zoning, so...
You know, residents are required to pay $50 per car per month and you have up to, like, one car per leaseholder. So, you're usually, if you have two leaseholders, which most units probably have two leaseholders, you can have two cars, which I believe correlates to the issues of parking and the reduction, removal of the guest parking to make room for more residential parking that they're profiting from.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you know about how long the guest parking's been unavailable for?
It's not all guest parking, but they did remove like a large, two lots' worth of parking. Part of it was on the Malden side, part of it was on the Revere side. But the Revere side had much more spots taken away. I'd probably say five, six months ago. Yeah, probably early spring. We were given about a two-day notice through an email that it was going to be removed. That day, they did go out and paint over the word "visitor," so at least people weren't going to get towed, which was, I didn't expect them to do that, but they did do it. So, that was great. But unfortunately, we were only given about a two- to three-day notice that those 20 to 25 spots are being removed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other opponents to speak tonight?
Okay, hearing done, seen, done. We'll close that part of the hearing. Any questions from the Planning Board?
Frank, I think it's a great idea to get rid of the hotel, commercial space, you know, restaurant. Great idea. Infrastructure, definitely needs it there. My question is the parking. Like she's saying, you know, you make an agreement with the City of Revere, just like when I do it, you know, you have to have two parking spaces or one parking space. Now you're limited or taking away or charging these people. You really got to get down to, if you make an agreement with the City of Revere, you have to hold that agreement. You can't all of a sudden start changing what you're doing as a developer. I mean, that's a concern. We already have enough problems with parking. Someone has to step up and say, "You've got 300 spaces." Do you know that they're charging people for that?
Just I've heard of it, yeah. I didn't know that. That's why I asked. They were doing that on the beach also with residents there and forcing them out that didn't want to pay onto the road. So, now we put in, you know, site plan review conditions that it has to be part of the lease agreement, include in the rent and not an additional fee. So, I would, as Paul Rupp suggested, that all the owners get together, we put together a parking management, have them put together a parking management plan that properly addresses this. And the Planning Board has an opportunity tonight as submitting a recommendation to the City Council that, yes, 1.75 spaces, but also include 0.25 space, 0.25 spaces per unit for visitor parking. So, that gives you a quarter or 25% of the total parking spaces assigned to visitor parking. And that should solve the problem across the board.
Do you remember when they were approved as a hotel, what they had for spaces?
With the hotel?
Yeah, when they did get approved for the hotel, how many spaces did they have then?
They never came forward with a plan with the hotel, I think. I'll have to look the ordinance.
Not enough?
No. No, for the hotel at Overlook? Yeah. Back then, it was, I think it was one space per every hotel room. Yeah.
If I could ask, on the basis of the square footage for this potential restaurant, coffee shop, 2,000 to 6,000 square feet, in what those numbers would be based from? Then, secondarily, the addition of casual restaurant to retail service or coffee shop makes sense, but is there reason why that definition cannot be expanded further? So, why in which there would only be, say, a restaurant or a coffee shop if there's an expansion to what that, you know, commercial space may be used for?
So, it's my understanding in terms of the definitions that any of the retail types that we've talked about tonight, you know, drugstore, grocer, coffee shop, all of that, all of that is presently envisioned and could be allowed as commercial development on the site, but for on Lot 1, we need permission for it to be standalone, not attached to a hotel. And the concept of casual dining doesn't exist in your zoning code. And so, that would be the one thing we would have to add, but it's not committing that that's the only thing we could develop there. It's that this would be retail, it could be standalone retail, and it could now include sort of the full panoply of what's already allowed and envisioned in your zoning for commercial for retail, but then adding in the new definition just so that if there's a restaurant, it doesn't have to be sit-down table service only.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. And I think it's important to consider, as you said, the panoply of options that could go into that space that would best serve and be enjoyed by those who are living there. Yeah.
Yeah, and it would be our expectation that during the site plan review process that would come following a zoning amendment, that that's when we would be moving from sort of a very high-level concept at zoning amendment stage into an actual, you know, design and real proposal that can then be taken out to market to look for those tenants. But yeah, the idea would be what best suits the location to best serve the residents because that's what would make it most successful. That's absolutely the goal here, is success in that location for the people that live there. And just wanted to make sure, to clarify if necessary, that it's not this client that has been taking away the visitor, I'm sorry, my client, this developer, that has been taking away the visitor spaces. We also learned about it for the first time yesterday and are looking into it and, you know, have committed to doing whatever we can with another owner that we don't control to say, "We just learned about this. What are you doing? Tell us what's going on." And then similarly, for the shuttle service, that Varis and on the Revere lots and then Wynn Development on the Malden lots have committed, even though it is a shared and joint obligation of all owners in Overlook Ridge, to be providing and funding that shuttle, that Wynn and Varis are committing and have committed now to bring it back, I mean, we'll chase after the other owners, but to bring it back and front the funding themselves to make sure that it is up and running, central location, and that regardless of which building you live in, any resident can, or actually anyone who's standing there at the bus station can get on, can get off from a central location in Overlook Ridge. So, did just want to clarify that as well.
What kind of communication exists currently between the various owners?
I'm going to pass that question to one of my... I'm going to pass that question to one of my clients. She wants to know what type of communication exists right now between the owners.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Marshall Teicher. I'm with Veris Residential and have been involved in Overlook Ridge from the beginning as well, from its prior development in Rosine Property Company. You know, it is an interesting topic that's come up where there's multiple owners now and there wasn't in the past. So at the very moment, there is no site-wide communication process. When this came up and we learned about it, we've begun that dialogue. We have reinstituted the shuttle. We are preparing, and we just approved today from our side and sent it over, a resident notification will be going to all the residents at Overlook Ridge via ourselves, Wynn, and we're going to the, we've gone to the property management firm that's running the Chase Properties, and they're going to be sending out an email blast as well with the new shuttle schedule. The comment that's been brought up by Tom and Frank and everybody else is, and the resident attending tonight, is that we need a site-wide notification system, so we're going to, we're going to develop that. Not very difficult to do. Email blasts are pretty easy. Every apartment manager has an email address for every resident, so we're going to come up with a way to coordinate it and we'll formalize it with, with you or the governing body. It's a new issue, so we're dealing with it now. And as mentioned before, we, we certainly did not know that another manager was taking, you know, guest parking, you know, away, but, but we don't know much about it other than what you heard tonight.
For how much time have there been multiple owners?
Say it one more time.
How long have there been multiple owners for?
It's fairly recent. The, the, it's coincidental that the Corey Stone Building is being managed by Wynn Management Company, who happens to also be the proposed developer in Malden with us for the new properties. That's, that's simply coincidental. That building's been separate ownership for years, but has always been involved with us. The Altera Chase Properties were recently sold, and so it's new ownership, and, and we've not had any communication with them, but will be.
Thank you.
You bet.
Frank, was that part of the agreement, the shuttle, when they first developed that development?
Yes, that was part of, that was a requirement made in the MIPA, the MIPA certificate states that they have to provide a shuttle service. So, you know, it's part of the environmental review requirements that the state enforced.
So if no one complained, that shuttle would disappear. I mean, obviously people are complaining, so now they're going to bring it back. How, how did that happen?
Right. I don't know. Apparently what I've heard is that the shuttle was very popular prior to COVID, and then the numbers went down, you would think, and then after that, they reduced it from three to two to one shuttle and totally eliminated it. But now it's back in effect, I believe.
It, it should not have been discontinued. I mean.
I'm not blaming you.
No, no, no. It, it should not have been discontinued. And the ridership did go down, and the shuttle should have been adjusted as far as trips and capacity when it went down, but never discontinued. So we volunteered to the governing body last night that you could, right now it's strictly a MIPA condition, which is not very noticeable to everybody and, and on the table. So we proposed both in, for Malden and Revere, that we're comfortable, we'll propose putting it into our approvals from both municipalities so it can be more carefully watched for future ownership. We're on top of it now, but someday we won't own our buildings. So the shuttle, the shuttle should be a condition.
It, it actually was a condition for each building of a site plan review.
Right.
Because it, the site plan review report indicates that they have to comply with the MIPA certificate, which in turn requires a shuttle service. So they are on board for, are being obligated to do it. It's just a matter of enforcing them.
I think it's important.
Any other questions, board?
If there are no other positions to be heard, we're going to close this section of our hearing. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go into the regular meeting of the board. The first order of business is the approval of previous meeting minutes. Motion to approve? Approve. Second order of business is a vote on a recommendation to the city council with respect to the proposed ordinance for the regulating lodging houses and rooming houses. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
A motion to favorably recommend by Mr. Desimone. Do you have a second?
Seconded.
Yes. Second.
On the motion, a vote, Mr. Miko was absent. Mr. Delvecchio?
Yes.
Mr. Desimone?
Yes.
Mr. Jaramello was absent. Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons-Hurling?
Yes.
Yes. Second order of business is a vote on a recommendation to the city council with respect to a proposed zoning ordinance amendment for the regulating logic, nope, wrong one, zoning ordinance amendment to the Overlook Ridge overlay district regarding the parking amendment and the casual restaurant amendment.
Frank, can we, can we proceed with the conditional support?
Excuse me?
I said, can we proceed with the conditional support or recommend the, manage the parking plan and communication plans?
A zoning ordinance requirement. So that's something we could add in as a recommendation.
Right.
And in the LRA, we could probably further quantify it, qualify it through the city's consultant, you know, Mr. Rupp.
Right. I think that we're all in agreement here that those are important aspects.
Why don't we take them one at a time then? Regarding the, the amendment for our restaurant services and casual dining services, do we have a motion?
I'm motioning.
Mr. Delvecchio? Second?
Second.
Mr. Desimone? Take a roll call on that. Mr. Miko was absent. Mr. Delvecchio?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Desimone?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Jaramello's absent. Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
And Mrs. Simmons-Hurling?
Yes.
Okay. The second amendment is the parking, reducing the parking requirement from two spaces per unit to 1.75 spaces. Do we have a motion on that or you want to open it up for discussion?
I'm motioning.
Motion by Mr. Delvecchio? Second? Mr. Rhodes?
Frank, I actually would like to ask something of what you mentioned.
Yeah.
What you had potentially proposed? What you had potentially proposed?
Yes.
As a recommendation, could you reiterate with respect to the 1.75?
I mean, the, the planning board can recommend to the city council the 0.25 spaces per unit be set aside for visitor parking out of the two spaces per unit.
Understood.
And that brings it down to 1.75 spaces per unit.
Yeah, understood.
For resident parking.
Okay.
So you could, you can make that recommendation if you wish, and that could go to the city council. Again, they'll have a final vote on this, the next meeting, where it goes to zoning subcommittee, and they'll discuss and they'll, they'll probably vote on it that evening. So that's, put that in a form of a motion or recommendation to council?
I think a recommendation would be appropriate.
Recommendation for visitor parking, 0.25 spaces per unit. Mr. Desimone, seconded by Mr. Rhodes. That. Okay, on the motion to favorably recommend it to the city council, Mr. Miko's absent, Mr. Delvecchio?
Yes.
Mr. Desimone?
Yes.
Mr. Jaramello's absent, Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
And Mrs. Simmons-Hurling?
Yes.
Voted, so audit. Okay. That, that completes the business of the planning board this evening. I have one other article of business to discuss, and I have to have our chairman and vice chairman sign a signature form that allows him to sign plans and be recorded in the land court, and a majority of the planning board have to, has to sign that, assent to it also. So we can take care of that business after, after the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
Seconded.
All favor.
Aye.
So audit. Meeting is adjourned.